Good afternoon, I'd like to call this board meeting to order. And first of all, just a little housekeeping on our board agenda. For board members, we are going to move item E up in front after item C. So we will go A, B, C, E, D. Yeah, so if anyone has any problems with that, yes, just we're trying a new alphabet tonight. Okay.
Are you changing curriculum?
No, no, okay. And if you would all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And you could all stand please for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, and we will have Janelle read our mission statement tonight.
The Waterloo Schools Community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you very much, Janelle. Now we will move on to item A, which is, we have some celebrations, lots of good, exciting things tonight, so it's gonna be a great meeting. Our first one is a new partnership recognition with Cunningham School for Excellence. And we have Jake Hartman here from Cunningham, if you'd like to come forward with Aqui, and if there's anyone else here from Cunningham, representing Cunningham, or the partner in education. And I will read, "The First Presbyterian Church in Waterloo has agreed to join the Partners in Education Program at Cunningham School for Excellence. Cunningham's current partners include Community Bank and Trust, St. Tim's United Methodist Church, the City of Waterloo, Waterloo Public Library, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and VGM Group." So we are really excited to welcome First Presbyterian Church as a partner.
And church here, there we go. And we have a certificate to present to you for the new partnership with Cunningham School of Excellence, and if you'd like to come on up here, you're welcome, thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
Well, we just want to take this opportunity to thank them for joining Cunningham and just being a part of our family, and hashtag family, pride, and excellence. They have already been doing so much for our school this past year and things like that, so we just are excited to officially make you an official partner with Dr. Walter Cunningham School for Excellence.
Thank you very much, we're so excited about that, and please thank your church members at First Presbyterian Church, we really appreciate your partnership with the school, thank you so much. Item B-
Do we need a picture of them before they go, or did you get a picture?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, could we?
That would be great.
I just hate to have everybody get away and then we don't get a picture, so can you just come over here and Aqui can maybe snap a picture. Why don't you come right through the, come right through the door? Come on up, and she's saying, "No, I don't want to." Come on up! We want to celebrate you a little bit.
Yes, we are so glad that you are here tonight.
Do you want them right there, or do you want them to come right up in front? They'd probably prefer in the middle? That's right. Now, Dr. K, do you guys want to just come right over in the middle? That's like the best spot.
We're moving ya.
It's really big. Thank you so, oh, great.
Okay, we will have you remain there, Aqui, and we have a second partnership tonight, and that is with Pointer Elementary. So any reps from Pointer Elementary, and Stephanie is here, and we do have someone here from the Evansdale Fire Department, so this is awesome, and they are joining the Evansdale Fire Department to be partners in ed at Pointer, and Pointer's other current partners include Barnes &amp; Noble, City of Elkhorn Heights, First Security State Bank, Crossroads High V., Principice Lutheran Church, St. Mark's United Methodist Church, and Tyson. So this is exciting to have the Evansdale Fire Department, so I'll turn it over to Aqui.
Thank you, and I should say, you know, it's easy to almost lose track sometimes of just how many wonderful partnerships we have with our school, our schools and our community entities, our organizations and businesses, and it's just really a nice opportunity to acknowledge that there's a mutual understanding of just how important it is to have these collaborative relationships with our community and our schools, so thank you all for that. So as you say, Evansdale Fire Association, we have a certificate to thank Evansdale for the new partnership here, and would you like to say a few words?
Wonderful. Sorry, so over the years, they've already helped us quite a bit, so we're very fortunate that they reached out to us, which doesn't always happen, and asked for this partnership. They're very good about coming out during Fire Safety Week and as well as donating some things to help like our food pantry that we have at our school, so it's nice to just make it official, although we know that they've been supporting us all for a long time, so thank you.
Thank you all very, very much for humoriness and letting us get out of the picture. Next, we have moved to item E, just to complete-
C first.
Oh, C first, okay. Donation to Highland, correct, sorry. And Aqui again will be here, do we have Carrie or Matt here? And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge with gratitude the $6,000 donation from Nazareth Lutheran Church and $500 donation from VGM to purchase classroom carpets for Highland Elementary.
Second.
And information, please.
Yes, so a couple of our classrooms in kindergarten, first and second grade have had great success with these carpets, so we are very thankful to our partners for letting us purchase 10 more so that all of K-1 and 2 can have those carpets in their classrooms.
And I was just looking at the pictures and the different colors, do you put that, like with the different subset group of students, like, or do you use the colors also?
Yep, they'll use the colors also for grouping students.
Crowd control.
Yep. Everybody gets a square and stay in your square.
Did VGM purchase the other ones too? Did VGM also?
No, actually, one of our mentor coaches donated hers from her classroom, and then some of our teachers asked for them for like Christmas gifts.
Okay. Fantastic, nice.
Yeah.
Awesome. So any other questions? That's wonderful for those donations, both of those with the $6,000, and does that cover all the carpet then with-
Yeah, it will cover all the carpet and the shipping.
Awesome, great. That will, we'll expect pictures and-
Yes, they'll be in in the fall.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, any other questions, board? All right, all in favor of approving the, or accepting the $6,500 donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0. We never turn money away, thank you so much, that's a good thing. Okay, next we will go to item E now, and that is another board celebration, and Aqui is here for that, and Katrina's also here, and this is a list of lots and lots of awards, so I don't know if you gals are gonna read them, but we look forward to hearing them, so go.
Sure, thank you. We won't read all of them, so the School and Community Relations Department won 21 awards with Iowa School Public Relations Association, otherwise known as ISPR, it's the state chapter of the National School of Public Relations, NSPR. And of course, the team, the office is an award-winning team, certainly prior to me, and I wanted Katrina to join me because really Katrina is the person, very literally, behind the lens of many of these awards. So as you can see out of these 21 awards, almost all of them are for our Waterloo Proud campaign, and that campaign, we started at the very beginning of the year, there were really specific reasons that we wanted to create a campaign that equitably provided coverage of each of our schools, and so that threw Waterloo Proud essentially was an opportunity for once a week, we highlighted or spotlighted a different school or a different building, if you were to include Waterloo Career Center, and Katrina was charged with ensuring that we had a total of somewhere between five to seven specific individual people spotlighted each week, and one of them needed to be the principal in a video, and then two staff members, and then three students with some leeway there for, in case a person was sick, Katrina knew that she had sort of the opportunity to make some executive decisions in, on the, as the boots on the ground. I would say that, you know, one of the goals with the Waterloo Proud concept was to saturate our social media channels with a variety of positive stories, showing the very, very many faces and voices of Waterloo schools, and Katrina did that incredibly. And one of the things that it took Katrina doing was being very consistent and persistent about contacting our building principals, the staff, and really doing a lot of coordinating every single day almost, that she wouldn't have done in the past, and so I really want to just applaud Katrina because this was a new way of telling our stories, and it was proactive in a way that hadn't been done as much, and so Katrina, if you wanted to talk to us a little bit about a couple of these or some of your favorites.
Well, in general, it was a lot of fun because I got to hear stories that never would have been told without this campaign, and it was really fun because towards the end, principals were trying to one-up each other with stories, and that just made the storytelling even better, like we started with the best one at Lincoln where the student came, where was she from? Cambodia?
Um, I don't remember.
Anyways, she was here, her family was still there, she had never seen snow, and her goal was to get her dad to come join the family. I started crying when I talked to her because it was so emotional, and then she just grabbed my hand and said, "Hey, you want to walk me back to class?" And we skipped back to class, just like it was nothing at all, and so it was fun to get to the heart of stories and really get back to journalism and tell the truth behind the Waterloo schools and the pride that teachers had, and I think one of the best ones for East High, which isn't on this list of awards because we just taped East High, was the pride that came through each and every person, and it wasn't just the teachers, every single student said Trojan Pride, it's real and it's in the buildings. So it was fun to feel that and come back and share all the stories with everybody.
Some of these available on our website?
Yeah, not on the website, they're on Facebook, Twitter, and all of our YouTube channels, our YouTube channel. And then for some of these, like that Blue and Gold Award, those are the very top awards that they give out at ISPR, and so we got two of those, and then the Awards of Excellence are a very top honor as well, and then the Award of Merit for Photography, so.
And with this Waterloo Proud campaign, you know, it's, when we're telling our stories, it's really so that ultimately we're making an impact on human behavior. Are we engaging staff and are we engaging families with our schools in a way that want, in a way that informs the relationship with Waterloo schools? Do they want to stay here? Do they want to come here if they're not yet here? And one of the things that we saw was in a Facebook message, evidence of that, right? So building a campaign that engages audiences even from outside of our geographical location and that ultimately impacts their behavior around our school district, so we got a Facebook message from a young woman who said, "Oh my gosh, I can't believe how excited I've been about your social media posts. For the last several months, I've been following your posts, loving everything that you're doing, the stories that you're telling, and the ways that you're really promoting a variety of things, including diversity, including student achievement, in addition to sports and athletics." And she said, the bummer though, is that she's getting ready to go into the teaching profession, and she's, she was following several social media accounts, trying to figure out, learn more about these different school districts, and trying to figure out which one she wanted to eventually apply to, and she's like, "The bummer is that I thought you were Waterloo in Ohio," I think. "I thought you were Waterloo, Ohio." Not Waterloo, Iowa, I'm not gonna move to Waterloo, Iowa, but here's what I would say about that. You know, as we become a well-oiled machine around this, and in tandem with HR, there's an opportunity, when, as soon as somebody reaches out like that, there's an opportunity to say, "Actually, we'd be happy to get you connected to somebody at HR who could talk with you about some potential opportunities. Maybe Iowa should be on your radar now." Do you know what I mean? So there was that, that happened, that was really cool.
And I did include a link to the job posting Kingsley for her, just in case.
So the engagement is high, on some of our highest engaging posts, we were at about 16,000 likes, so again, you know, in some ways, I don't know how much likes really matter, but ultimately, when it's about engagement and in theory impacting human behavior and perceptions around our school district, that number matters. So thank you, Katrina, and congratulations.
Yes, thank you both, and Katrina, thank you for your excellent photographic and videographic skills.
It's cool because I've gotten so used to seeing Katrina's stuff, you're like just part of our fabric, background and everything now, and it, people seek you out now too, so I really, I appreciate it.
Are any of the Career Center folks in media getting involved in this?
That's a really good question. I know that in years past, Katrina has gone to the WCC and has held workshops with some of the students around social media and photography. I've been in touch with several staff members there, we're really thinking about how we can build out a robust partnership between our office and their classes, utilizing the green screen, they've got incredible podcast equipment, so really thinking around how we can engage the students there with visual storytelling, and then content around radio and audio and broadcasting as well.
Just showing these and then explaining the details behind the production.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
That would be a good thing to collaborate on, yeah. Okay, so now, we thank you again, Katrina. Now we are on item D, and this is another information only, but this is very exciting, and we actually get to get up and see things in action, but it is a board celebration for the First Robotics Competition. And the Waterloo Schools has been active with FIRST programs for several years. FIRST stands for For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. It's a nonprofit program that works to inspire students' interest and participation in STEM. There are four programs under the FIRST umbrella, the FIRST LEGO League, junior is K-3, the FIRST LEGO League is fourth to eighth grade, FIRST Tech Challenge is seventh to twelfth, and FIRST Robotics Competition is nine to 12. We have multiple robotics teams participating in many different levels of competition. This past year, 14 students competed on our FIRST Tech Challenge, the FTC 7247 H2O Lubots, and FIRST Robotics Competition FRC 5837 Unite for Tech Teams, drawing seven students from both East and West High School. Highlights include the FTC 7247 competed in three league matches, they were awarded the Think Award at the league championship, advanced to an Iowa Super Qualifier where the team faced stiff competition and did not advance, but they participated in the Iowa, they participated in this event. Then the FRC 5837 competed at the Iowa Regional in Cedar Falls against 44 teams from eight states, wow, ranked third after qualification match, the highest ranking since 2016 when the team was ranked 20th. During alliance selection, the team was named captain for the Number Two Alliance along with Iowa City and Alden, Minnesota teams. While the team failed to advance beyond the quarterfinals, this was by far the farthest they have advanced in competition, and to captain the Number Two Alliance was so exciting and provided much-needed learning for future seasons. So we are really looking forward to this, guys, so if you all want to come forward.
So I'm just gonna have a little PowerPoint.
Yeah, sure.
So my name's Dick Herban, I'm one of the coaches, Maggie's our other coach. We're gonna have the kids do a little bit, I need to turn this on, I think you can see it on your screen already. If not, did that turn on?
It'll take just a second. Yeah. It'll take a second to run.
Yeah, all right. These guys will tell you how challenged I am, so, but we'll see how that works. I don't, do we actually see the light on? Huh?
I was talking to Noah.
Oh. Does that, someone see the light on up there?
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, we've got it. And we can see it on our screen.
Oh, you can?
Yep, yep.
Okay, without further ado, we're gonna have, pull this out so we can advance it, slide, and someone's gonna speak to this slide.
My name is Brendan, and this is who we are, and as you can see, we have great diversity in the LGBTQ community and some ethnic diversity, but we do have a lacking of female members, which we wish to accomplish more of in the future.
Okay.
Okay, so we just have a list of-
Say your name first.
My name is Sam, I'm a junior at East, and this is our list of the core values. We're not gonna take the time to read over it because we only have so much time, but yeah, but this is like what our goal is, FIRST has a mission to inspire people, it's actually in their acronym for inspiration and recognition, so we decided we'd use the core values to say the actual word, inspire.
Who's next?
Hi, my name is Ash, and for the FTC season this year, we went to three league plays, and we were in the league championship and won the Think Award, which is one of the top engineering awards at the competition, which sent us on to the super qualifiers. But at the super qualifier, we failed to advance to the Iowa State Championship, but we did end out with an innovative and well-performing robot.
My name is Noah, and so I, for our FIRST Robotics Competition, we competed at U&amp;I against 44 teams, and we are proud of our ranking at the end, our third-place ranking and our second-place captain, Alliance Captain Award, and we also ended the year with a very high-performing robot, which you'll see in a moment.
Yes.
All right, so here's just a couple pictures of some things, we'll just quick pass through If we have time, we're gonna show a video of a match, do you guys have time? I think someone up there is actually gonna have to run it, I don't see it on the board here, let's see. Well, let's see, maybe it is gonna run. Well, I clicked on it. Now is it actually playing?
There it goes.
So matches are two and a half, well, we'll let you say, speak about it. They're gonna start getting the robots ready up there, takes a minute to fire up.
Sure.
Okay, maybe it's not gonna do that. So Walder, we'll see if this plays, the matches are three teams against three teams, so you're each an alliance member, red and blue.
What match were you gonna try to play?
We were gonna try and show 70, it was our highest-scoring match. The match starts out with a 15-second autonomous period, and then there's the remaining two minutes and 15 seconds is teleop. At the end of the match, there was a deal where you hung, we'll see, actually, if you just click on any one of them, it's aye. Although it'd be great to see one where we did our high scoring. They said 70, I believe, was the one.
Of course they want to show it here.
What's that?
This is... Is that match 27?
70.
Perfect, there we go.
There it is.
So it might be hard to see, see if you can go full screen.
It's full screen on our, on our computers.
So now autonomous, there's teams that are shooting those balls, and they can pick them up off the floor, and you can start with one, you get more points if you score in the top. Our robot, which is in the back, which you can't see, we scored one in the low goal. We had a bunch of issues this year, so we really had to remake our robot in the last two weeks before the competition, so we went with some elements that were, we know we could handle and be consistent at.
Did you say it's 2549? Is that what we're watching?
5837.
5837.
Okay.
You see on that bottom left there, we were just in the picture right there.
Do they have a big white banner on the robot? It's basically, people that can't see are on this.
It's a defensive element plus great advertising. And some of you, I think, were there in person, and you know, it doesn't do justice watching a video here, which is again why we have some robots out in the hallway to show you, although with just a single robot, it's way more exciting with six on the field.
What was the most catastrophic issue that happened this year?
Probably reading the manual, and I make a habit of not necessarily reading all the rules because that's really the kid's job, and we discovered two weeks before that one of our elements was quite illegal, so we had to redesign the robot to conform to the rules. Then we had another mishap at the event where one of our elements was above the goal-scoring permission. We went through two practice matches, no one identified it. Third practice match, we came back with 70 penalty points?
It was pretty good.
That was practice match, not a real match. So in the span of about a half an hour, we had to figure out how to make our robot legal, and actually, in doing so, we actually made it much better performing. So we'll describe that feature when we show you out in the hallway. But by, by some bad good luck, we actually had this rule breaker that our innovation came through very quickly, and we actually had a better performing robot. Probably not how we want to do things in the future, but I really don't ever read the rulebook entirely, it really is the student's job.
I'll read it entirely.
And maybe we'll do a little better job next year. Anyway, we won that match 75-22, if we just hang on there. If we look at the scoring, right, there's taxi, cargo, hanger, and penalty. Taxi is something that's done in autonomous, basically your robot just has to move. Cargo was scoring those balls in either the higher low goal, and then hanger at the end of the matches, you may have seen some of, and you saw our robot hang with a partner. So those are the way the penalty, points are scored. We also did have a penalty in that match, I don't know if that was, that was on the other team, so we get the penalty points, that was not, we had a penalty. We have one more slide here, and then I think we're gonna go out to the hall, let's close that up. We want to really say thank you to the Board of Education for your support in the past. In case you all don't know, you do provide salary for coaches, you give us somewhere in the range of about $10,000 between the three, between the two programs, that includes travel and FRC and FTC budget. Angelie Myers has been very supportive of us this year. Erin Sale, as you know, has taken on some of the lower stuff, but we're coordinating with her for the, for the FIRST programs. And then we did have a really good meeting with Zach Kelly last week, so we've come up with some stuff that we want to get done in the, in the buildings. We've identified some tools that are not being used over at West, that we believe we're gonna get permission to move over to East and get them hooked up, they're not being used. They're not being used, and the Career Center really doesn't need them, we've been told. Uh, we really do enjoy the trailers at the, at East, uh, and the shop space that you guys have also provided us. Uh, one thing we do intend to do is we hear there's some ESSER money around. Last year, you asked us if there was a list. Uh, we really never came back with a list last year, kind of because COVID was a little, we didn't know where we're going. Uh, but we've got a list this year, and I have the form, so I will be, uh, probably creating about three different ESSER grants. One for a new three-D printer, two of them for, uh, CNC routers, one the Cadillac and one the less-than-Cadillac. And we'll see if you can approve one of those. And then probably a couple of extra computers for the robots. And with that, I invite you to come out to the hallway, because if you have any questions, it's probably best to do it out there, because I want students to answer questions.
Alright, thank you. We'll be there. Okay, can we get, um, I'll call the meeting kind of back to order in here. And, um, next on the agenda is information of individuals and delegations. And I don't see anyone here, so we will not read the caveat. So we will go on to item F, which is the consent agenda, and that consists of four items tonight. Um, item F is the minutes of the May ninth, twenty-twenty-two regular board meeting. Item G, personal appointments and adjustments. Item H, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. And item I, IJAG memorandum of understanding. Are there any of these items that we would like to have, um, pulled from the consent agenda? Item G, okay. Anything else? Okay, so all in favor of approving the consent agenda, items F, H. Oh, okay. A motion to, uh, approve the items F, H, I on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
And all in favor of approving F, H, and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried seven-zero. Now, um, item G, the personnel appointments and adjustments. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So move.
And discussion.
Yeah, I'm just noticing that there's, uh, I know a couple resignations and retirements, but it looks like that season has kind of ended. And just kind of curious as to how we stack up for, for fall. Have we hired the staff we think we need? Uh, how are we, how are we coming replacing all the good people that retired or, uh, or resigned?
Absolutely. So, we have approximately, it was sixty-three off the top of my head, resignations or retirements over the course since January first. Um, and so, and we have about thirty-three positions, or thirty positions posted currently. And I give that number, um, just to say, one, that we're doing better than some other school districts in this regard, where, you know, we see that level of movement, um, typically around, um, a hundred. Prior to COVID, obviously during COVID, I think I talked to you about that we hadn't seen the movement at all that we normally see, and I think we're coming out of that. Now, the caveat with that is about ten to fifteen or so positions, I don't have the exact numbers on it, I apologize, that are positions that we have given in addition to, because we talked about one of the things that we've done with COVID in response is lower class sizes, provide additional resources as well. And so you're seeing somewhat of a, a give and take as far as those numbers are concerned. So, to answer your question a little more succinctly, we feel like we're in a pretty good spot. I can tell you right now, we're looking at special ed as being a main concern for us right now. Uh, and that's a concern across everywhere. Uh, I think it's a conversation that's on our weekly, if not, um, daily, back and forth with other HR, um, individuals in the state. But then also, we're really struggling with our core positions. Um, you know, we typically, um, math, science, literacy. We haven't seen the same number of individuals that have come through U and I and other places that have come to apply for different positions. So I'm hopeful that, you know, I'm putting some notes and things in place for my successor as far as what they can do and what we've seen. Um, this is why I've advocated on a, a number of different, um, times and, and places around, we need to open up our state more. Um, you know, not only just for the diversity of coming from different places, but also because they are teachers that have science and math and literacy degrees that would love to come into Iowa and get paid, um, the salary that we pay them in comparison to like Missouri and some other places. Uh, we just have to shift our thinking a little bit on what that means for current Iowa teachers, because right now, we're, we have, we're dealing with a significant shortage that just, um, changing some of the requirements aren't gonna help. I just received a word from our Dean Mahalan that the legislation has passed, the Senate has passed the, um, House file, well, that doesn't make any sense, Senate file, for, um, removing the praxis two requirement. So if you know they've removed the praxis one, and now they're looking at removing the praxis two, that will help. Um, but again, I, I truly believe it's our regional exchange license that is our, our biggest barrier that, again, if you have an Iowa license, you can go everywhere, but if you come from here, come from somewhere else to come to Iowa, you have to put so much work and time in additional classes that, I mean frankly, from my vantage point, don't make any sense.
So in casting a broader net, uh, are we doing additional job fairs or are we doing, uh, just the?
We are. Um, you know, that's where that connection with different HBCUs, Hispanic serving institutions, has really helped. Um, we have, we've, the, the career fair platform has shifted online considerably to where we use an organization or, uh, something like, uh, an organization called Handshake, where we do typically a lot of our, a lot of the postings that colleges actually send out for, they send there. It's really tough until those relationships are established, similar to Lincoln University, to get in the door, because, again, why Iowa? Uh, why go, um, to Iowa instead of California or some of the other places where they can produce a different level of amenity? But that doesn't mean that we still haven't gone to a couple of places. I mean, we, we've gone to, um, at times Northern Illinois, um, because of their ELL teachers and their special education teachers. We've gone to Minnesota, and so these are things that we continue to do. Um, they just haven't necessarily borne the, the fruits that we would hope for. Um, when we've sent principals, we've even sent some mentor coaches and teachers at times to show them that our, our process is a lot more comprehensive than other districts. Um, really, I think, you know, your work on the board and, I mean, the rest of the board as well has been transformative as far as that starting wage doesn't matter. I mean, I'll be frank, just negotiating with a teacher, I don't know, it was Thursday night, um, and they were asking the salary difference between Cedar Falls and here, and they were making a decision based on that salary difference. And, um, and they came here, you know, and so that's, that's something that really has helped, especially as, uh, we're dealing with, uh, worker shortage across the country. And so, um, I'm giving you more than probably, um, you've asked for, just because I know that my, my time is limited, just to tell you the work that we're doing behind the scenes. But, um, I do think we're in a good space. I mean, there's some buildings that, I won't name names or name buildings, but have typically not, um, had all their teachers hired at this timeframe that are set. So we feel really good about where we're at right now. There's a PE position that for some reason we cannot get filled. And again, that's rare, because we typically can find some PE teachers, um, anywhere. Um, and so there's some weird stuff that's happening, but by and large, we've done, and I want to give credit to Lorraine Dell, the principals. They've really gone above and beyond to work harder now, um, work smarter, harder now to not necessarily have to work so much in the summer. Thank you.
And will there be, um, a potential to have to, maybe those key positions, like incentivize, you know, to?
Yeah, we just had a question today, um, this afternoon. Um, we typically do an incentive, uh, for a bonus incentive for our special education, um, staff or our teachers. We did that last year, so we're gonna probably do that again. We don't want to do it too quickly, because we want to exhaust all efforts first, because, you know, you get some people, um, but as, as you get closer and closer to getting to the summer, um, you wonder why some of those peoples are still, some of those people are still in the pool, are still awaiting jobs, and it could be that they've had multiple interviews. And what I've been excited about, not necessarily just from me, but from our exec leadership team, has been pushing, hiring the best. And even though we've missed on some people, we've, not missed on some people, we've, we've not backfilled some positions, because we didn't want to just hire a body. We wanted to hire somebody that was gonna actually affect and transform our students and kids. So I think we felt some of that heartburn this year, uh, coming out of COVID, because we did, um, have some additional positions that we wanted people to, um, get out there, but we didn't want to just hire to hire. And so that's different now, as we've worked and talked to people. I think counselors is a big one that we definitely waited a little bit, and now we're seeing those positions being backfilled. Um, and I think we're, I think we're, we're close to being filled as of, two more left, um, because I think we had four to six open at the beginning of the school year. Um, and so these are some things that are happening that, again, um, not to get into the details, but, um, we're doing well. We're doing well as it, as it pertains to, again, not only other districts, but just in general.
I have a question that is, is a little outlier, but of course, so, um, the substitute authorization course. So I was looking online to see, um, my son just graduated. I'm like, you need to get something going. Um, and there isn't one through, um, what is our, our AEA called now?
Central Rivers.
Yeah, so it, there aren't any even virtual open. Do you know?
Just have, um, have, um, is it your son?
Yeah.
Okay. I have him contact, uh, connect with Lorraine. Uh, we've been working with individuals. Um, you know, the reason why the Central Rivers AEA doesn't have is because Grantwood AEA and others have the online version of it, and so we give them the actual course code and everything that they'll do.
Okay.
And, um, depending on the situation, if they're willing to stick with us for about, I believe, three years, we still have our substitute authorization program that, I know that we came before the board and asked you to approve that, to allow for them to, um, help us out. We're still doing our building sub program next year, which, again, the principals have loved. I mean, we, we really do have a smorgasbord of initiatives that I, I think people, um, are excited about, and excited about what next year is gonna bring, again, with, um, your blessing on the work that you've done previously, and obviously with Michael and his work that we've been able to do from a financial standpoint to provide for these positions.
And he's not, and his degree's in MIS, but I'm like, you could get started studying, so.
Absolutely.
I, I just would like, yeah, for people to know that that's out there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go back to what you were saying about what we as a board just did as far as the substitute teach, teaching in regards to, like, reimbursement or what? I didn't.
You had approved, um, a couple of different things. One, the building subs in general, but then you approved a reimbursement program, um, at the time, which, one of the barriers for many individuals, while they may have the degree, they didn't necessarily have, I mean, at times, three hundred dollars to do the course and do some of the other things. And so I thought it was, again, uh, very innovative by the board to approve that proposal, because that's really, it's so interesting to hear from our staff now and talk about, like, well, I've subbed in this class, and then we're talking about a family support worker or a at-risk coordinator or whatever the case may be. Now it's a part of the fabric that, you know, we're helping out each other as much as we can, and that barrier as far as that financial responsibility isn't necessarily on the employee to come up with.
I appreciate you repeating that, because I did get a question at the library about that, and so it's like, now that I have that in my back pocket, I'll use it again, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Kingsley. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried seven-zero. Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to item J, and thank you very much for your patience, Coach Moore. Um, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Educa, uh, the Board of Education approved travel for West High's varsity and JV football team to travel to DeKalb, Illinois to attend the seven-on-seven football camp located at Northern Illinois University from June eighteenth through the nineteenth. So move.
So move.
Go ahead, and we have you here for explanation, and again, thank you for waiting.
Oh, there we go. Okay, yep. Um, so the campus is actually on the nineteenth. We're gonna go down on the eighteenth, um, to stay overnight. Um, it starts real early at nine AM, so we didn't want to try to leave here at four, five in the morning and try to get there with the young man, so we're gonna try to do that. We've done this before, maybe three or four years ago, and took the guys down to Northern Illinois and, and stayed overnight and got a chance to tour the campus. Um, had one of us, the coaches, tour the campus and tour their football facilities and things like that, so we were trying to make it a, a good experience for the kids. Um, it's a seven-on-seven camp. They're also hosting the lineman camp too, so we did also offer our lineman, if they wanted to go, to go also. Um, the camp is paid fully by our fundraising efforts, um, through our football program, so a kid don't have to pay for any of the camp information. But only thing they need to do is bring some money for food. Um, we do go out to eat that night and probably that morning and on our way home. So, um, we've done it before, two times. This will be our third time going to Northern Illinois to do this camp. Um, I guess great relationship with their coaches. Um, I just know them through, um, the recruiting efforts is back when they recruited my son, so I know those guys back then. So it's a good, it's a good camp for them.
Do they stay in the dorms there?
No, we're gonna stay in a hotel room, if you ask that. Yeah, we'll stay in a hotel room, um, right by the campus.
Do they get to be in the stadium?
Yes, actually. Some of the games are in the stadium, some are outside, so they get a chance to do both. And then they also have an indoor facility. They have some games inside there too.
Cool. And how, how, can any kid go, or how are the kids chosen, and how many are gonna go?
Yeah, we're gonna take our JV and varsity team, so, but it's, uh, seven-on-seven, so seven-on-seven is only for the skilled positions. So that's more of the quarterbacks, receivers, defensive backs, more the skilled guys. So any, any kid that's wanting to go is interested in going. We didn't have a list, anything like that, so we'll take wherever a kid that wanted to go. Um, our baseball team has a game that Monday, so we're not gonna take our baseball guys, so we're gonna let them guys stay back, so that's, those guys will not be able to go.
So if this is the third time you've gone, tell us about the good that you've seen it do for the, the boys in the last couple of years. What have you seen?
Yeah, the reason I like it because of team building. It gives the opportunity to get outside and be together on our own. Um, I thought, especially with the facility tour, get our kids to understand, you know, um, this, other than football in high school, there's other football and the things that they have to acquire to do that. Um, you know, they get a tour about their coaches, so their coaches give us a tour and show us the weight room, the academic support center, those things. So our kids get a little va- a variety of things and understand what college football is all about. Um, I really like the competition also, just to get outside the state of Iowa and go compete against some other schools, so we get to compete against teams from Missouri, Illinois, and those type of things like that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I've heard more recently, but the seven-on-seven is really growing at all different levels now. I mean, it's really good, even at the youth and middle school levels, so.
It's becoming really big. It's almost, I could put it if you have anything to do with AAU basketball. It's becoming a AAU basketball, where they're starting to put all-star teams together. We actually have two here in the state of Iowa, and they do it in the spring, and they have traveled down to Florida, Arizona, and there's some tournaments down there. Um, we have started our own seven-on-seven youth football, Junior Warhawks, and this is our second year doing it. And there's some, there's some growing pains, but just learning how to maneuver with that and other sports that's going on at this time with baseball and that stuff. But our kids are getting the opportunity. They just was in a tournament two weekends ago, um, down in Cedar Rapids. Um, we're gonna host our own tournament this weekend. Uh, we had just a couple of teams coming in, and then, um, in June, beginning of June, we're going back to Cedar Rapids for another tournament. So that's just our youth. We have a third and fourth, I'm sorry, we got a fifth and sixth grade and a seventh and eighth grade team that we put together.
Fantastic.
So how many other teams will be at Southern Illinois?
Uh, I don't know how many teams. It's usually forty teams. I mean, there's tons of teams there, all high school teams. They do a JV bracket and a varsity bracket, but it's, uh, I'd rather guess about forty different teams that are there.
Wow.
Do the students ever get to, um, connect with any of the student athletes at the college itself?
Um, though, they use their student athletes to do the refereeing and things like that. Um, that's the only way, um, they do it. I know we go to some camps where they use their student athletes to be our counselors, but this one here, they don't. They just use them for, uh, refereeing the games and things like that, so they'll see a couple of guys out there. I'm fortunate enough to know a couple that go there and play football, so I've asked them to help with the tour. Um, one is a kid actually from Iowa. His name is Rocky Lombardi. Um, he's down there right now. He's from the Mo- actually, he's from Cedar Rapids, but he moved to Moay and went to Valley, and he went to Michigan State and transferred over to Northern Illinois. Him and my son are really good friends, so him and another guy, I know they're gonna help our team when we go down there for a tour.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time and going, you know, that takes summer days and, but we appreciate it, because it sounds like it's an excellent opportunity for the young men.
It's a great opportunity, and I appreciate you guys, and even looking at this. I think our guys really like doing it. We haven't done it in a couple of years because of COVID, but get back into it, and I think it helps our team camaraderie, just heading into the, just heading into the summer.
Great. Well, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried seven-zero. Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
And have fun.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, now, item K is our next, um, agenda item, and that is the central middle school remodel and the Waterloo Career Center expansion, project change order number oh-oh-four. The superintendent's recommendation is that the board approve the central middle school remodel and the Waterloo Career Sh- Center expansion project change order number four as presented as an add of fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty cents.
So move.
Second.
And discussion.
Yeah, on page nine, uh, fifty-one, there's a comment, uh, add ten days to the contract schedule.
Yeah, and then it's not on the, the K, the other contract. The other contract says no days will be added. Yeah, and then it's not on the, the other contract, the other contract says no days will be added.
It says it won't disrupt, it won't disrupt, and then it says add ten days.
So hopefully this. And is that the one we were?
Yeah.
Fourteen thousand, oh, no, that's, that's K.
That's K and W.
Okay, all right. So we don't have the same caveat on the proposed recommendation, right? Can we, can we assume there's no, no additional days?
Correct.
Added to the contract.
Correct, I will confirm that with envision, but my understanding is that the total project completion will not be affected by this.
Okay. That's, that's kind of key, because we don't have extra days. All right.
And this is a fairly standard kind of addition as they go along, isn't it, Michael? To come up with these kinds of things that pop up.
We have change orders that come up in the building process, a lot of them go against allowances.
Right.
We haven't a lot, we haven't had a lot that have increased the contract, we've had some decreases this year. I think they even talked about the injection well, or second injection well on this. Well, we determined at the end of the contract, so there could be another deduct.
Okay. But this was because of like an unforeseeable issue that was in the building, right?
Something that was older.
That they came in.
Yeah.
So Stacy, just apply aye to, anything over five thousand dollars, we bring to the board for approval.
Yeah.
So, yep.
Well, and that's probably looking though, they may have chose Larson, because Larson didn't say add, and even though they were more expensive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Get it.
Yeah.
Couple of things too, just, it completes the loop, so they will serve as battery backup, right? Does that make sense? And then the second thing, Stacy, one thing I learned early on that always helped me understand change orders is when they are drawing plans, there is a point where the architects believe that to continue on with the planning would add extra cost, that would actually be more than what those potential change orders would come. So there is a pivotal moment where they say, those are really good plans, and they could continue planning until there is not a single change order, until they believe that, but there is a pivotal moment where they say, it's time to move forward, so when they get it to whatever that percentage is, I'll just pick a number, I don't actually know this, but let's say they get it to ninety percent accurate, they will go ahead and bring it to the, the bill, you know, to us, so that they, so it's very normal to have change orders, but what you don't want to do is have plans that are so sketchy that your change orders are out of control. And so, there, that's, I don't know if that helps, but that was just one thing that really helped me upfront. So there's, I don't know that we've ever done a project that there's not change orders, you just don't want any huge surprises, and if there are big surprises, then you always feel like maybe the, the architects didn't get it close enough to that completion, so.
Just refinement of the design.
It is, yeah, you just want to get close enough that, that, yep, yep.
I'd like to amend the motion to put that proviso in there, because, because I think K and W Larson didn't repeat it, but I'm not sure that that nullifies it.
Right.
So, I'd like to say provided there is no.
Change in timeframe.
Yeah, there's no additional contract, no additional days in the contract schedule.
Yes, that would be a friendly amendment then. And who?
First here, first in.
Yeah.
India and.
Sue, Sue. Yeah.
Lyle, are you talking about on Larson's bill, or on the change order itself?
On the K and W, in, in the actual K and W in our document on page, well, it shows fifty-five.
That showed ten more days.
Right, that's.
Larson didn't mention it, but on the change order itself, it says it will not increase the number of days. If you look down right above the signatures.
Right.
What page are you on?
You'd be on forty-nine there.
Actual A I A document of the change order.
Oh.
So it is listed on that.
K and W is subcontracted off Larson.
But I, I agree with Lyle that we need to verify that with K and W and Larson, that it will not increase any time.
My suggestion would be to go back to the superintendent's recommendation and just add that last sentence, as presented as an add of fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty cents, provided this does not affect the project completion date.
Okay.
If you get an amend, or friendly amendment, and a second on that, you can go ahead and vote on that, and then that solidifies.
Yep.
All right, I move that.
Okay.
I amend that.
Second, I support.
All right, so we need to vote on the amendment.
Jesse in India.
Yes.
Jesse in India.
Yes.
Different.
Okay, so.
I agree to a friendly amendment.
Yes.
I second it.
Okay, so. Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, this, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve central middle school remodel, Waterloo Career Center expansion project change order number zero, zero, four, as presented as an add of fourteen thousand one thirty-two twenty, provided this will not affect the project completion date.
So move. Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, chair votes aye, carries seven, zero, amended. Thank you. Okay, now, on to dishwashers.
I got the headline.
Yeah. Item L, and the superintendent's recommendation is, the Board of Education approve the quote from the Wilson supply, restaurant supplying the amount of sixty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the central middle school dishwasher replacement.
So move.
Second.
And discussion. I see we got two quotes, which is good, quite a bit different in the price.
Yeah, we discussed this at facilities, went into a little more detail. I guess in base, bottom line, we were sure that the Wilson one would adequately do the job, not only now, but in the foreseeable future, that was our main.
And it, and it had advanced, advanced technology from today, right? Just the boiler systems and stuff.
I don't recall it.
We had discussion on that, but.
Yeah, I think you may be right.
Instead of the traditional, they got more blowers that are.
Oh, yeah, the, the, today's system has Bailey, basically ceiling fan, ceiling fans to help dry the hot, I mean, they're hot, so they're going to dry quickly anyway.
Yep.
Dishes, but this one has a more targeted air.
Nozzle type.
Nozzle type blow-off, so.
Is there any kind of warranty built in?
I'm sorry, what was?
Is there any kind of warranty built in?
I'm sure there is.
From them, through Wilson? Are we, is there any kind of warranty? Like with parts, or is, I bought my first dishwasher, although I would never owned one, but like, there's parts that are, you know, under warranty and parts that aren't.
Like this says extended warranty second year, the first year is included.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, that's right in here, I think, so, yeah, and then, yeah. Now, was this just normal replacement, or was there?
Twenty years.
How long had the other one lasted?
So I have a text here from Zach, he was unable to attend tonight, so this one is roughly twenty years old at Central, which is definitely lifetime, if not a little bit more. They tried to do a few repairs, but that was only temporary to do those repairs, so. And this is, if I remember correctly, this is the one that's used up at U N I, correct?
Yeah, this is the same.
Locally, it's the same one that they used to.
Same manufacturer.
So some good, yeah.
The new one is, the, we do not have any by this brand, but it's the one that's been used successfully at U N I, so that was the basis of, of thinking it's okay. And also, I believe, delivery would be in time for school, but the slides, the benches, the tabletops, whatever you want to call it, the into and out of it may not be here in times, but this supplier will put in temporary, temporary ones. Don't seem like that should be an issue, but you never know what's an issue these days.
Right, so when did they say it would, it just said this summer, so.
They got to work around everything else going on over, you know, power out issues.
Yeah, that was, Zach needed some time to work that out, especially with, he needed to find out the power out days, because there's almost a month, if I remember right, that's currently scheduled for power out, so he may have to provide temporary, I don't know, that, that one is still, Zach is working on.
Okay, and is the old one completely kaput, or does it still work?
It's leaking.
Okay, but if we did run into a little problem, we'd have still something that would maybe work.
It's stainless, if I remember right, it's, well, it's most likely all stainless steel, but it's pitted to the point where it's.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, and, and we did get an update, Pam also received from Zach, that he will get something in writing about not changing the timeframe for the previous.
He said that they talked about it at a job meeting, that it does not change the completion date, but he will get that in writing as well.
Okay.
Good.
Great.
Okay, so all in favor of the new dishwasher, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries seven, zero. So now that brings us on to our non-action items, and that would be the superintendent's report.
Great, just a couple of things, mostly celebrations, so, first of all, great job to the robotics, I think that was really just a fun, every year I think that they become more confident in their presentation to us, they're just, you can just tell that they're getting, they're just getting more set and, and more acclimated to the work that they've been doing, so just great, great job to them. I would also like to congratulate one more time our Gold Star teachers, only because it's so timely, the, the celebration and the award ceremony for them is tomorrow night. So I know at the last meeting, we said something, we named them, but I just feel like it's warranted to mention them again tonight. So tomorrow night, we will have five Waterloo Schools teachers honored, Dawn Boone, who's a third grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary, Jane Castings, who's a media specialist at Orange Elementary, Andy Hanson, who is a fourth grade teacher at Lou Henry Elementary, Andrew Scruggs, who is a music teacher at Kitterell, and is that one, two, three, Kyle Coilers, there he is, who teaches in our I T department at the Waterloo Career Center. So just great congratulations, they just made amazing choices there, I think those are excellent teachers and, and very deserving of this award, so congratulations to them. And some of us will have the opportunity to buzz over quickly and get to see part of that, so that's great. I just also want to reach out and congratulate all of our seniors who will be walking the stage in the next seventy-two hours. We have Expo graduation tomorrow night at six o'clock, we have West High graduation at, and the East, I'm sorry, Expo is at Expo, Expo Alternative Center, and then we have West at McElroy, no, not McElroy, McLeod, McLeod, McLeod.
I said the same thing.
Did you say the?
What are you talking about?
I don't know why I said that, McLeod on Wednesday night at six o'clock, and then we have East High at six o'clock, also at McLeod on Thursday. And so, it just, I know there's just, you know, seven hundred seniors who are going to be graduating, and I'm just so proud of them, and so it's always a highlight for me, and I think especially a highlight for me this year, because it's the last set of hands that I'll get to shake. So really, really a great opportunity for all of us, so great job to them and congratulations. It's some, probably bittersweet for some of them, and some are, you know, grieving the loss of high school, and some can't wait to move on to the next thing, and I think that's completely normal, so that's great. And I just wanted to, I've, I've said this type of an announcement before, but as I experience a variety of activities within our district, it just makes me aware of how many different things we offer, and how it's so great for our kids, because everybody's different, everybody plugs into something a little bit different. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to a couple of J R O T C events, some, as you know, we have Air Force at West, and we have the Army J R O T C at East, and it just snags a huge group of students who really click into that type of, you know, it's got such, so much leadership, that's part of those programs, and I just, I'm so proud of them. And then, you know, I had the opportunity to go to a couple band orchestra and choir concerts over the last couple of weeks, and there's just, there's so much going on right now, and of course, we have all of the sports things, we have soccer, I think, going on tonight, and then we have track, and, I mean, there's just all kinds of things. So I just, I just think it's really great that we offer so many different things for our students, and that they plug in even the robotics tonight. We talked about, some of the students in, in, that presented tonight, that's their thing, I mean, that's their thing. And so they might not be out for anything else, but they found, they found their spot where they just feel this great passion, and so I'm just really proud of them. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, you know, on Tuesday night, I was just so honored and humbled to, to be at the retirement ceremony or celebration for me, and it felt so good. I, I woke up the next morning and thinking that, that was just a really great way to bring my, I'm not done yet, Sue, but to bring my, to bring my career almost to a close, and it just, it felt, it felt really good, and I was just so grateful to have so many people be there, and, and, you know, I know not everybody can be there, absolutely, but I've heard from so many people. So it just, it really was, was great, a great event, and I was just, I wanted to publicly thank people for, for that, thank you.
Yes, it was, it was honoring you, and Kingsley, you're not done working either, so don't try to hide over there, okay? We're going to start with Stacy tonight for board comments.
Okay, first, just an update on the Equity Committee. So we were able to kind of sit down and hash over the purpose and, the purpose and power that, that, that the committee would like to have, and how, how we can work that into policy. And one of the things that was brought up is to bring on, bring Astron, if you'd like to, or any other board member, but I had talked to Astron in particular about it, and just trying to figure out what it's going to look like, and what the board then wants from that committee, like any other committee. And so, if, on the website, if you go to where it says Waterloo Schools Equity Committee, and it lists, like, the goals, we're going to be going over those next, so if anybody has any input on that, then, then let us know. Oh, I was not able to go to Jane's party, my, I had a migraine, but I was able to go the next night to the district retirees ceremony, but I didn't know it was invite only, and I felt absolutely stupid. And my mom came with me, and, and my sister, because they both work for the district. I, when I asked for the dates from Pam, I wasn't told that it was invite only. Is that something that we said, because when we talked about it during the meeting, I don't remember it being invitation only, was it?
They, they have worked on, on how to handle that, I mean, at a time, it was like, and one, and as far as staff or administrators, I think that has kind of been more, if you'd like to come, because you are, you know, coming to honor the retirees. But, yeah, as a board member, you can attend anything you want within the district, so.
But I mean, I brought my, you know, I brought other people who have worked for the district.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think there was just some confusion out in the public too about, because I'd heard from a few people, oh, are you going to go tonight, and then, well, no, wait, you can't go, because it's invitation only.
Right, right.
So it was, it was lovely, I just, just wanted to give my, a little bit of input, so, otherwise, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hey Stacy, real quick, just because it was new, because of the venue change, I think, you know, we're ironing those things, I mean, Aqui is working on that. So I, I think, what, I think we heard from everybody, it was fine, I mean, I didn't think, I think it's just more, we were trying to manage the space of the event, and then, you know, I think based on the feedback, and hopefully we don't have that many retirees next year, you know, we'll try to expand and do more, but I'll let Aqui chime in.
Was there a reason it wasn't at the Career Center, like, has the room, like, for Jane's?
So we put together a committee that planned the event this year, and that committee included people from my department, as well as human resources. And one of the things that, so I was given background information on how this event had evolved over the years, and recognizing that years ago, it was off-site and not at a school building, or a building associated with one of our, one of our campuses, a school, a building associated with our school district, and then eventually it moved. And then eventually it moved here to the boardroom. And along with that, the menu changed over the years, the attendance shrank, as I understand it, so that the boardroom became the place where it made sense to, to host a small group or an intimate group of people. And then pandemic became a part of that process as well. So we knew as a committee this year that we wanted to figure out how to create an experience that would at least start moving us forward in a direction that would say, hey, we're really trying to think differently about the where, the who, the what, the how we celebrate our retirees. And we knew that we didn't necessarily want it in the boardroom, we wanted to attract hopefully more people than what this boardroom would accommodate. We also knew that we would have Jane's Retirement at WCC. There was a lot of conversation around what is, what are the advantages of having a retiree event at one of our campuses versus somewhere outside of our organization? What message does that send? We knew that Jane's would be the day before. We wanted, we hoped that the retirees would feel special, that it was something a little different, that it wasn't necessarily the WCC where.
It was lovely, it, it was, it was very.
Aqui, if we could do it, it was lovely.
Yeah, is it, is this helpful or?
It's really not necessarily something that we would do at a school board meeting, where we're planning, talking about planning for next year. So I just, I, that's not, I mean, you were asked a question, so I think if we can just hold off on that, that's, we can definitely talk about planning for next year at a, you know, at a different thing, I think we just, I don't know that that's something necessarily appropriate for today, to them, so.
Yeah, and you, it was awesome, you did a great job, so, and Stacy said that too, so, okay, Jesse.
I, I just want to say your comment regarding who is available to attend has been noted, thank you.
Jesse, go ahead.
All right. Took the time the other day, it was, you know, experienced to, watch my pronunciation here, our new K-12, the counseling piece was via Zella, so, and looked at what it did, the, for my children, what theirs came up, and I had, had a couple other parents asking us about it, and it's kind of intriguing, you know, just seeing all the different, different career paths, you know, some of them would be, you would think, okay, that's kind of different, you wouldn't think that'd be in there, because it's not a, may a traditional career, but then, you know, it kind of fit a lot of different pieces there, and it's kind of, it's interesting, because with, at least my children are kind of revealing that it was, it lined up pretty well, what we thought they would, you know, seemed to be interested in, maybe were strengths and stuff, so, you know, we need to explore it a little bit more, but definitely encourage families to, you haven't looked in on it, to go out and have your kids bring it up and try it. It's definitely, I think worth the investment, but then I know it's a big piece there, and then, you know, as we soon get a new crop of middle school kids in from the elementary schools here, that, you know, to those parents, if you haven't had secondary age kids yet, start planning, because you need to start looking ahead, even wondering middle school, what your high school might look like, because you need to kind of plan ahead, because it's a fast three years, so, anyway.
Thank you, Jesse.
Because my last three years in middle school is done, so I'm, that's for sure, so.
Now on to high school.
Yeah.
India.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Aster?
Just a few comments. First, congratulations to all the 22, 2022 graduates, who'll be walking the stage in the next couple of days, and to everyone else, remember to finish strong. I do want to say happy retirement and thank you to Colonel Keith, Lieutenant Colonel Keith at East High. I had an opportunity to attend the JROTC awards ceremony last Thursday at East High, and it was awesome. And I see it here as a, as a proud dad, my son was awarded a few awards, but also appointed as a, I don't want to quote the wrong title, but I think it's the top.
Commander.
Commander. Yeah, commander for the, yeah. And just knowing how many students are involved in, in the JROTC program, we, we talk about diversity all the time in, in our, in our district. And I had a conversation with Colonel Keith, I believe it was last year or the year before, and he talked about the diverse population of students that participate in the JROTC program. So just, you know, thank you to him and, and, you know, thank you for all his hard work in building that program up at the school. And also, I had an opportunity to attend, let me bear with me here, I had it on my phone here for a second. The Mother Moon, let me, let me, let me make sure I get it. Yeah, it was, it was, it was awesome. The 2022 Mayor's Top Teen and Mother Moon Scholar, Service Scholarship Award reception that was held at the, it was at the, what called me, Cedar Falls, Western Communities, the Western Communities, and we had students from the Waterloo Schools represented. I believe it was five or six students representing East and West High School, and it was based on their volunteer opportunities that they volunteered throughout the community for the past year. And my son was a part of that as well, with a few more students, and there was a representative from West that received the scholarship the previous year as well, who hosted the program, and it was attended by both mayors, so just wanted to shout out those young people that serve others and volunteer throughout the community, just making Waterloo proud every step of the way, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Jana?
No comments tonight.
Okay, Lyle?
I'd like to echo Aster's comments, first of all, and Lieutenant Colonel Keith, and Marla as well. You know, ROTC is probably the best leadership program, you know, there's an argument that US military has the best leadership programs in the world. People pay big prices for that sort of training, and here we have it as a signature program just for signing up, and all the evidence that I can see is it, it meets, it fulfills its expectations. I mean, it's really a great program, so. And then just congratulations to Pam and Kingsley and everybody that arranged for the Jane's Retirement event. It was not only well orchestrated, but if you looked at the content as well, I think it impressed a lot of people and just was another opportunity to showcase Waterloo Schools, and I think it did that very well, so congratulations to all that. And then to the Dick Urban and Robotics team members, I think our challenge there is to grow participation, so that, that remains an unfinished item, as evidenced by the young man from Purdue, you know, that's, that's went on now, and it looks like he's got a terrific career ahead of him. So I guess that's, yeah, that's it for me, thanks.
And Aqui was a big part of planning the celebration too, like the instigator, so good job, Aqui. And happy 75th birthday, Lyle, just a personal note, but, and then I just, I knew you wanted me to say that. But, you know, as we read our mission statement each week, I often think, are we doing that? Are we doing that? And I just had a couple things that after Jane's party, Pam and I and Kingsley were helping to pick up, and the East High Boys Soccer Team and the West High Boys Soccer Team had played a game outside, and we had a little bit of food left over, so we thought, just a little, so we thought we would invite them in to eat, and I thought, oh, this is going to be such a mess, and, you know. Those young men were so polite, and I thought, oh my gosh, are we preparing them for citizenship? As how they were so polite, absolutely. And also to contributing to a community, how they were just so kind and polite and respectful, and I was just so impressed by both teams from, all the boys from East or West, and they were sitting there eating, and, oh, there's more, well, thank you. And I took cookies around, or cupcakes, and wow, thank you, and every, I just, so parents of soccer players, East and West boys, amazing job, those kids are very, very good citizens. And then I saw on Facebook that someone was at Jethro's in Altoona, and I was there this weekend, and it was the state track team from West High. And another person totally outside, I looked the person up, they, random, from whatever, said, these boys from, young men from West High's track team were the most respectful, they were the most caring, kind, everything was, yes ma'am, thank you ma'am, please ma'am, thank you. And I just thought, boy, I mean, parents are helping a lot too, but they're learning something in our district to make them good citizens and to be good contributors to the betterment of this world. So I just wanted to say shout outs to those three different teams, so, that's all I had. All right, so could I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, no opposition, we are adjourned.
All right.